Okay, let's officially call the meeting to order. And other comments, do we have any?
No, sir.
Doing none, we'll do it for item number three on the attendance budget workshop. Who's gonna speak for these?
I think that Heather probably has a couple of words to say about how she compiled.
Yes, please.
Alright.
Um, I guess your most important goal is gonna be number one. I just took everybody's score, put them together to the right of each one. You'll see, I left the same thing, like the must-do core service. And in that example on number one, it says four. So you, four of you made that your top priority.
Is that the only four of us responding?
Um, I don't know what that means, let me think. I'm trying to think who responded. Yes, I did not, yes, not everybody responded, sorry.
Is David's thing in here or no, just commissioners?
Just commissioners, not everybody, yeah. He doesn't get a vote.
But when I talked about that, Heather, then he might do it, so I just.
No, the mayor, I was talking about the mayors, sometimes scores them. But yeah, I only had four people's responses, so that reflects the four people that. So it goes, I put them in order from the most important for you guys through the end. And I did the goals separately, because that's the way that you guys had held on that.
Good. So I just feel like this is probably what we should be referring back to later when we talk about where we're gonna spend money.
Yeah, I think it's a good consensus of our scores, and it gives us a rank. You know, some of these are, I would say, like a quick win, it's kinda easy to just need to do it. Others are complicated and expensive and take a long time. So, you know, I don't think I stacked it in here, but I think the priority is probably a good consensus from what we all submitted.
Me personally, I was very disappointed to see my vacuum system end up at the bottom of the list. But it is what it is. If anyone is probably happy with the scoring, maybe we could need to revisit. Hopefully, we're all a little surprised at how it came out. But I'm, I'm good with the way it is, and we should just move on.
Thank you.
Yep.
You want the hind of the V?
Yep, the governing body.
I'll start out the governing body, and David might tag on to me. Um, the governing bodies, when we do present it in the line-by-line part, it will most likely only have three major changes. One would be to professional services. We're going to look into getting a consultant to perform the ADA assessment of the town that you guys had discussed and prioritized. We need to codify the ordinances, so that's a few thousand dollars every time we do that. And then, based on what you guys talk about tomorrow, with how you wanna go with the audiovisual, there'll be some kinda cost to that.
Yep.
So do you have any questions on governing body, or?
Nope.
No, ma'am.
Pretty simple, okay. For admin, the only one that we're really anticipating going up is the property and liability, because it does every year, but we just don't have a quote on that yet. So that'll be determined.
What do you think of this?
Honestly, sometimes I don't even get it in time for the budget. Um, within the next month, they'll give you the application, and I'll get it right back to them. But I think they kinda wait for all the other municipalities to do it also. So sometimes we just have to take a guess.
Well, I suppose, how's it been trending? Is it level, is it increasing? Can we look at where it's come from and say, here's where it's probably heavy?
Yeah, we'll look at the last couple of years. Um, it was steady for a while, but the last couple of years has been a little bit of an increase. So we'll, we'll look to see. When they send it out, sometimes on their cover sheet with the application, they give us guidance as what they're expecting. So we'll look into it as best as we can before we put the number out there. So that's it for me.
Everything else that will be in there, you're saying is basically the same?
Yeah. So unless no questions, I think Tim's next.
Yep. With inspection department has no big ticket item. Um, we are reducing our, the cost of the capital outlet of vehicles that we had last year, which was fifty-one thousand. And there may, there is a couple of them that's been reduced. I just kinda laid it out there to the side. Printing is the only thing that I'm expecting to make cost more next year. And the reason being is because we are investing in a plotter so that contractors won't have to provide us a set of plans anymore. They can only provide, they can give it to us electronically. And then we can print a set out, which we seal. And then that will actually be the official set. That way, we know that what they're giving us electronically is what we're putting in the field to review for inspections. Uh, so that, that's the only reason I think we're gonna be buying some bigger paper. And so that's, because we are, we're gonna be printing stuff. And it'll help the town, too. We've needed it, I don't know how many times, to make maps, diagrams. It would really be helpful this week when I'm trying to get some other stuff straight to site plans. So, um, we're excited about that. It's simple, it's not that expensive, but we're, we're excited about it. The contracted services, we're reducing that. That was actually the addition to the amount we always asked for that was in there last year, was anticipation of the work that we would be doing in the Hallstead. Um, and we've kinda rearranged where we put that money now. So contracted services should not be as much, so we're reducing it. Um, but the overall budgets, operating budget's gonna be in line for the last thirteen or fourteen years. Around seventy-eight thousand.
I appreciate you answering my question before I asked it at the bottom. How many employees?
Yeah, and then, and then there, oh, I had something I wanted to say, but yeah. But, um, but yeah, that, that operating budget pretty much reflects a good, steady trend that we have.
Chris, these three columns on the left, is item orders, people, things?
Yeah, basically, only one of them increased. But there's one that's the same that I put on there that's greater than, it's a mistake. And that, that's dues and subscriptions, it's not gonna change.
The big ticket is that vehicle that's not there.
Yeah, we, we actually carried the two vehicles that, that, the last one just sold. We had them for a combination of twenty-seven years. Uh, the two last vehicles we had. And then we bought three vehicles basically in three years. So we've got all new vehicles. And it's usually that seven-year cycle, easy for us to pull, you know, before we need any more. They don't have a lot of models.
I'm glad you got them staggered like that.
Yeah. But that's it, we're not, we're not expecting any.
So Lou, I know I've asked this question before, but when you sell them, that just goes back to general fund with proceeds from selling the vehicles?
Yes.
Okay, I, I got an email from Motion Island, they're auctioning.
For Tim's, for Tim's vehicles, Cox vehicles, depending on where it is with Chris's vehicles, would be funded depending on where.
Can we auction them, is that, you sell them?
Got deals.
Got deals, okay. Like I said, I just got the email from Motion Island, and it listed there, but I guess I'm not on the list to go from there.
Yes, thanks, Tim.
Hold on one second, Tim. You have the same number of employees from last year, though?
We have four, no, we, well, in the last two years, we actually increased. The department basically ran off two people administrative personnel. But two years ago, we hired a plan review and a building inspector who's been in training for the last two years, who's trying to get certified. And we moved the administrative assistant to that time that was up. Last year, when Rhonda retired, we moved her into the zoning. And she's been in training as well. As a matter of fact, she's gone this week for club land management training for our CRS stuff. So we have four, which is the most we've ever had.
Okay. So when we see salaries and benefits and things in the budget, it'll be higher this year than last year?
We had, we had four last year, we had four last year.
So it'll be the six, except for raises.
It should, yeah, it should be the same, except for the, the. Overtime. They're, they're in training, so when they're gone, you know, unless I can do all the work, they're gonna have work when they get back. So overtime's gonna be a thing, they're also studying, they're also preparing for exams. There's, there's some overtime. We went to FEMA class, all of us did, two weeks ago, in the community college. So we're constantly, they're constantly trained, so they're gonna have some overtime, so that might change.
What was the last, what was the last year?
Uh, no, it fluctuates. It depends if, if they decide that they want to get multiple certifications, then they're gonna be gone for multiple days. We, we, we have the incentives for them to get their certifications, but we kinda let them go at their own pace, we don't force them. Because some of these things are requiring you to spend some time away from family. So they gotta have that plan, yeah. So it's hard to predict.
Okay, understood. Here's what it was last year, if you can, you know, talk to it.
No. I can tell you it wasn't very much, not a whole lot.
And I'm sorry, the contracted services, who's it, no, like you said, went down. What service are they providing, or what?
Typically, it depends on what comes up. Uh, the one that always comes to mind is if, when we're doing a CRS or a reevaluation, if there's issues with the elevation certificates, if the surveyors or the engineers have not filled them out properly, then when we, and when we send them out for review, then we have to, have to get them corrected. And if we can't get them, then we have to go out and get someone else to do them. That's one that we've had in the past. And you see, they don't just pull the current ones. They're liable to go back, which has caused some changes in our, the way we handle public records. We used to just hand them out, but we've had to go back in the past, because they're liable to randomly pull ten from nineteen ninety-nine. And if they're, if those have been misplaced or taken out, then we gotta regenerate them. And that's for the public's welfare. Uh, other contracted services is, is that sometimes we will develop localized stormwater plans uh, to identify problems if we have a complaint. If there's a complaint on the board, you know, my neighbor's causing water and that kinda stuff, so we have to go out and get a professional to come out and do that work. Some of it could be for small site plans or surveys, where we need to verify. We, they give us a, a survey, doesn't look right, so we do verification on it, because we're required to get enough information to make a decision. So it's a broad spectrum of us having to go out and get other professionals. And we may have to get the engineer over, we may have to have the engineer look at something that's provided to us, uh, to see if it's correct. I hope that explains it, that's what it is. And that line I'm never getting spent down. I don't know that we've, have we, David, have we ever spent that line? I, I don't, I think the most we ever did was twelve thousand to correct a, a stormwater problem at Marco fifty-five that wasn't. It wasn't when Marco fifty-five was approved, they didn't require them to put the stormwater system in right. So they actually subdivision developer, so we partnered with them.
And communication, you become, that is?
That should be handled up there with Heather and them, but that's, that's our, our phones, um, that we use.
The remote desktop is the big portion.
Yeah, the remote desktops. Um, and we also have, you're talking about remote wifi.
The, no, like the actual programs that we use, like the word, the, it's, or cloud, that's the word.
We also have remote wifi, we have remote wifi that we carry with us in the field. Yeah, so we have those as well. So it's pretty much our communications, how we keep up with it, how we monitor it. I use it at home. I use it at home, if I'm at home and I wanna do some work, I can use it. Thank you for the call.
Good job, Tim.
I've got a lot of information in here, I just blew it out there, and we kinda go through, and talk about where I was coming from a moment. Got questions, comments, concerns, we discuss it, so. Seeing as how this is a workshop, this is, all these numbers are around there, there's nothing definitive, so I want you to think on that, and that was the final, final price on any of them. Basically, what I went through and prioritized from that first sheet, as you can see, is one through six. That's kinda the way I prioritize them for the department. First and foremost is the radio compliance. The phase-two upgrade, there's no if, ands, or buts about it, that's, that has to be done. And to do that entire thing, all radios to get where we need to be, and the notes are in there, but we're looking at about thirty-three to thirty-four thousand dollars. So thirty-three, six is gonna be pretty close to the number. Maybe a little less, and maybe a little more, we'll, we'll enter that down if we do a better numbers. The second priority is gonna be the federal ten thirty-three program, which is where we got the hungries from the government on the, it's LES S, the law enforcement support services. And that's where they give us their supplemental utility equipment that we can use under their rules and regulations, blah, blah, blah. Part of that is that if they give us military equipment, it has to be demilitarized. So it can't look like, you know, the National Guard's over here doing operations, and even market for, you know, it is a police vehicle, and we're using it for a storm response or emergency situations, whatever that is. So that's really, those two, top priorities, there's, there's really no way around this, you have to be like. Then we get into.
Wait, can I ask you, what exactly do you plan on doing with those hungries? Like, what is the purpose of them?
So, so our main purpose is for high-water clearance situations during storm response. We've, we've had several vehicles that have received damage, thankfully we had a total one yet, but just in high water, we've had vehicles that have got flooded, different things like that. I think Chris, Republic Works, even flooded a vehicle that got totaled last year, a couple of years ago. So, so the purpose of those vehicles is for the high clearance stormwater. So if we need to respond to anything during those storm situations, you know, that we have the capability to do it without flooding vehicles out.
So they're significantly higher than your trucks?
They, they are, not only that, they're really designed, they have storm control systems. Frank could tell you more about that, but they, they can go a lot, lot of ways.
If you have a water problem, if you can hold your breath, you can drive it. That's the way they're designed.
Their capabilities are much, much different than the public actually.
They would sit in front of the.
I've seen, I've seen them, I'm just wondering what, what was the rationale besides wanting them?
They would go to bulletproof.
And they got the differentials tucked up, and so you've got a lot of ground, but it's still solid.
Yes, sir. And I think that's a, a small price to pay for two vehicles of that kind.
Correct, and that's, that's, they give them, well, say give them to us, they, they allow us to use them, they're still, they're our vehicles to use and do as we, you know, anything, police and law enforcement response related. Their only requirement, or they have a few requirements, but they're not a requirement there that we have to follow and put money into, is that we have to be militarized. Market this, this type of response vehicle and use it for those purposes.
So let me ask you a question, it's not necessarily budget-related, but who's the decider or gatekeeper on probably asked for from that program, or what we did? Is that you?
Pretty much, yes, actually.
Here's the reason I ask, because when I worked for the Corps, we were able to get um, equipment from GSA surplus stuff. And we got a beautiful crane, and they delivered it to us, came from Japan. I mean, this thing was a sixty-ton, looked like the Ukraine. We got it, it spoke Japanese, and we could not, we could not get it fixed. It eventually got flooded in the high water. So, that was kind of us shopping on GSA, going, oh, cool, get some of that. We had six welding kids, not one of them's worth a damn, but we had different pockets and different ways to get rid of it. So the reason I ask the question is, we get these things, they may be free for us to get them, but we need to be sensitive to what it costs to modify them, so you guys can use it.
And that is correct, the maintain, the maintenance and all that is on the department.
If we went up, if I see a tank sitting over there, you're the guy, come talk to us, a lot of you did that, what it costs, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Yeah, no doubt.
We can go shopping on site before we request any equipment, too, to kinda check it out. Because they always tell us, anytime you're looking for vehicles, they tell you to go to the Air Force place, not a marine base. I've got a Jenny ten to be, much tighter, sure.
I don't know, it seems like it's always toys to me, this day.
But they're cool trucks. But I, yeah, I guess I was a little surprised I was ahead of the police trucks in terms of priority ranking.
And, and it's because of the requirements in that program, that they say we have to maintain and do all that.
Obviously, demilitarizing, which is pretty hard to go and painting on.
Is, yes, is very minimal to, to demilitarize it, but yes, we just, we need to put something on the side that says, say, this is Home Beach Police Vehicle, this is an Army National Guard or Marine Corps over here doing operations on the island.
Yeah, are you guys on the pan, something up in hand?
We, we, yes, we figured we'd do just a flat color, just, just get a flat coat of paint on there, put Home Beach Police on the side, we'll put a blue light bar on the top, one of our old white bars. So every, for the most part, everything that's going in these trucks is gonna be recycled equipment that's coming off of retired police trucks. So, you know, it's, it's not gonna have a whole lot of money to it.
And they're ready for two, right?
Yes, and, and that, so that will come out of trucks as well that, that are being retired, so. Okay, so that's, that's the first two. Third priority would be replacing two of the two thousand fourteen trucks. Idea there would be to, to sell three of them, as I, as I told you before, we have, one is basically a parts truck. Um, and we've been using them to, to part out and keep other trucks running. So if we get rid of two of the trucks, we can sell the third one, um, and just replace two vehicles. You know, we're looking, again, very round figures, you're probably looking fifty for the truck, twenty for the equipment, and another ten for upfitting installation that we're not charged. So I'm rounding off the eighty, one hundred and sixty for two trucks. And they've come in with cheaper, hopefully a little cheaper, I hope I priced that on the high end, just round figures there, so.
But how many, how many officers do you have?
We have, not the ten, excuse me, ten positions, we have nine officers, so I'm like, ah.
Nine officers?
Yes.
And that doesn't include you?
That does include you.
And it includes Frank, so it's all together, nice, so, okay. So I'm, I'm looking at your list, right, from Dan's database.
Okay.
So I see nine, ten, eleven, twelve vehicles. I see one obviously has a hundred and fourteen, so you're not using that one, right?
That is, yes, that's one of the ones on the, on the list, that's two thousand and fourteen.
Well, okay, one doesn't have mileage on it, I don't know why some of them don't have.
Those are the three you're selling, that's never.
So you're talking about the, the fourteens, two thousand and fourteens?
Yes, and I don't, did I see the list? Oh, I had it, I'm gonna, no, I just would like, so we talked about the same thing.
You?
I'm sure I had the list, I just didn't have it given, it wasn't.
We'll share, you take that one, I'll share. So I'm seeing.
Four, fourteen.
Correct, correct, that is correct.
One of them is a, is a.
So the one without the truck, without the mileage, is most likely a parts truck. I don't have the VIN over here to confirm that with me, that's probably the parts truck. One of those is the black unmarked detective vehicle. And then the other two would be the, the two vehicles that would be sold off, the detective vehicle would be sold off this year, replacing two of those.
So we've got four, there are fourteen, sell three of them, keep the one with the longest mileage, probably, or?
It would be whichever one, I think it's the one, actually, I think it's the one with eighty, eighty-one thousand.
VIN number.
No, I didn't have the VIN number rest on this.
Eighty-one thousand?
Yeah, yes, that, that one, I'm almost certain without going back and checking ourselves, is the one that is the black unmarked vehicle, that's the one we're tracking.
So you want nine vehicles for each of the officers, plus an unmarked vehicle?
Correct.
So you want ten, you wanna have ten, would be your idea?
And, and a spare, so that way if a patrol vehicle goes out, there's a spare vehicle.
So you want eleven?
Just twelve, we have ten positions.
Right.
Oh, okay.
So eleven will be the spare, the detective vehicle, the unmarked black one would be twelve.
Correct, yes, now, now that's it.
And they're on a seven-year, seventy thousand mile?
Roughly, yes, as you can see, the two thousand and fourteens have extended the seven-year lifespan, and most of those have also extended their seventy thousand mile lifespan. So we, we make them last as long as we possibly can, that's, that's what we're at with those.
But I, I was writing down the numbers here, you said roughly eighty total, roughly fifty for the truck, twenty for the equipment, or?
Correct, yes, and again, very rough estimate, secretly.
And the ten for the?
For, for the upfitter to, to put everything on there.
That's concerning.
I don't know, I kinda feel like a spare doesn't necessarily need to be a new one, you could use one of your ones that has seventy thousand on it or something like that. We'll talk about that later, I guess.
And then as we.
See how much money we have.
Right, as we replace those, those, one of those vehicles would stay in the rotation as expected, right? We would not put a new vehicle as a spare. We would be, we're gonna explain, we would be, we're gonna share with you.
Okay.
All right, um, then the next one down, the fourth priority would be the detective. Again, that rough estimate would be around a hundred grand for salaries, training, equipment, blah, blah, blah. And then we'll get into this next, but you'll notice, like, the next four pages, I kinda went through the last two years of incident reports. It was mentioned to me before that, that we're gonna talk about a detective, so let's, let's talk about some of what's going on. So that's, that's what that's about, and you go, you know, besides, you don't think it's something that.
We've been operating with our detectives for how long?
Since two thousand and nineteen, eighteen or nineteen, you were doing duty. Since, since getting retired, I understand.
You don't remember that date exactly?
They, they all start running together, it was in April, yes.
Have we survived, I mean, you know?
There's, there's a difference in surviving and.
I mean, I understand we're not investigating a lot of stuff, it just doesn't get investigated.
Exactly, or somebody steals your stuff, they're gonna write a report on it, and you, you can get that right off. We don't have a detective to go look for.
I'll tell you, and, and this, I'll tell you one of the ones, and we can go through these, and we don't have to, but one of the ones that bothered me the most when I was going through is when I figured out, if you go to page ten in your books there, um, in July of, of last year, twenty twenty-three, we had, we had a string of V and E's that went from like six hundred block, right around, uh, what's the last one, that went past the firehouse, uh, to, Sand Dollar, yep. From right there at Sand Dollar to, um, just, the shrimp, well, shrimp or crab was one of the last ones, so I'm not like, oh, we're done with. Yeah, so anyway, we had a string of those. And as you can see, we got the suspect identified, he's in Charlotte. The reason we got the suspect identified is because at one of the houses that we had him on camera, he stole a bicycle. The same bicycle was recovered by the person whose bicycle stole happened to have a serial number, which is good, we're gonna dig in the NCIC system. If that bike had been found in California, we would've gotta hit back on it. But we gotta get back in, in Charlotte. Charlotte police stopped the gentleman, we're dealing with him, and they had our stolen bicycle. So good chance that same gentleman is the one who was over here doing that. But until somebody can actually interview him, there's just, there's a lot of follow-up work to decide if he really is the person who did this, or if he bought the bike from somebody else, or, you know, what was going on there. We got a suspect identified for, for seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven cases, right there, that all happened in one weekend. Just, nothing, I mean, I hate, nothing happened, we just, Charlotte called us, we said, thanks for the phone call, and then we got, this July, we're going about our business, so. And I really had forgotten about those until I started going through these reports. It's, it's, I hate even sitting in a meeting talking about it, it's a bad look on the department, it makes me look terrible.
Is there any way that you could do it as an ad? Is there any way that you could do it on an absentee basis? I don't know if that's what a private investigator would be able to do that or so that it wasn't, you know, you're not paying benefits, you're not giving a vehicle. You're not giving a huge salary. It's only absentee. Have you ever considered that or is that even a possibility?
He, I don't know. He says it's that's totally, it's that's totally weird. Maybe I don't know the answer to that. I know it would be, in my opinion, a bad practice. I just, if you're going to have somebody who's dedicated to that position. That's, that needs to be their job. And, and they need to specialize in that so that they know how to do it thoroughly when the, when the need arises for them to do it. And in my opinion, and it's just my opinion maybe, but I think in all the incident cases, and you can see there. At least in twenty twenty-two, I think we had at least fifty-six that should have been investigated by a detective. And another forty-one in twenty twenty-three. So that's in the last two years, ninety cases. That somebody should have looked at better than what we did. Other than going down there to the house, taking a report, saying, I'm sorry for your loss and going on about our business. It's just. It's a terrible look on the town.
Seems alright to the average community.
Jeremiah, I have a couple of questions for you. Weren't you our detective before?
I was, yes, absolutely.
Okay. So, um, if we had a detective. Of these unsolved ones we have, based on your experience, what percentage of those unsolves might become solved when you get? You got any feel for that?
I can't give you an honest answer there. I don't know. I would go ahead and tell you, if you have thirty detectives over here, you're not going to solve a hundred percent of these cases.
I understand. That's why they look at someone comes and takes a pool box or, or a chop saw and what's the like is it will catch that guy. It's kind of.
Correct. Some, some of this stuff will go unsolved and you'll have these ones like. Just like you said, somebody, somebody will call and say, hey, my pooler I stole.
Right.
And it'll be the only thing that gets reported in that area. And what it was, was some college kids down here saw a pool river back to somebody's truck. And they grabbed it and they turned all the beer out of it. We would never solve those.
Right.
But there's a lot more of these where things are starting to happen together. That should be solved or very likely would be solved if we had somebody to investigate. Those are the repeat offenders. They're going to continue to do this until they're stopped. And, you know. The other thing is, and I'm speaking on my experience here, I had a very good work in the Lexington Ocean Isle Sunset Beach, neighboring agency Charlotte. When they're doing it here, they're also doing it on these other islands. Because they're driving out from Charlotte, um, I recovered a boat in St. Paul, I think it was. They're, they're driving down from all these other areas. You know, coming down here and they're stealing everything from here and then they're leaving and going back to where everybody came from. So when we get the casual on camera, Ocean Isles got them on camera, and we figure out, hey, this is the same person. Just the resources out there are vast if you have a person that's dedicated to it.
Okay. So like the guy in Charlotte, would our detective go to Charlotte and interview them or?
Yes. 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 That is something I would, I would definitely send him or her to Charlotte to do that.
We had also talked briefly about, okay, if you had this guy, um, there's some other colleagues involved with these. But other things he may do back filming on vacations or things like that. Can you just tell me about that again?
Yes. So, so having the position there, there's still some of those. They still have the same duties and responsibilities. And Chief Lane preached that to me when they needed a detective, that my job was still a responsibility to just do patrol work. So I came in many shifts and work day shift, night shift, whatever. If there was a vacancy, I would still cover those shifts. And it's much easier to have a full-time detective who you can say, hey, on Thursday, care what happens. You're not investigating. I want Charlotte to do any interviews. Thursday, you're covering shift because we don't have anybody to do that. So it's much easier to reverse. A detective back to patrol the crews and to tell the patrol officer. Hey, on this Thursday, you're not covering calls on islands. I need you to go to Charlotte and interview a suspect. Then I know you don't have any experience doing it. So, you know, flip-flopping, as you said, from patrol or from investigative back to patrol is doable. You do it from patrol over to investigation.
And I think it's noteworthy that between these two years, the number of incidents have kicked up. Like eighty-one, ninety-nine, something like that. So although the dog value is not the same, but that has to do with houses you burn primarily over there.
That's, that's correct. And let's take for instance, maybe we just, we just have a business burnout over here. Very fortunately, we were able to determine that that was, um, called on, uh, same.
Yeah, right. I know. Oil and rags.
Correct.
Really can.
So they, they had it on camera. But God forbid if somebody had been angry at them for whatever reason, went over there and set the building ablaze. Thank God it hasn't happened. But we look at it on video at this point and we're like, well, I hate that for you. We know it's. You know, a guy in a dark hoodie or whatever it is. And I just, we'd be doing a disservice to him.
I got you.
It scares me for what will and not if, but when it does happen, it will be true because at some point it's going to be.
Well, that's one of the points. We have some crimes here that aren't all that big or all that expensive, but there we had some that. Require someone to really investigate. That's all the questions I have. Thank you.
I think we talked about that. There's kind of a threshold. I saw a big one here, three hundred and eighty-six thousand Secret Service happy files. There's a threshold right where we'll get help. I mean, this is a big crime for a small town like ours, front of the county or state, if somebody will come in. Is it well defined or is it?
It's, it's not well defined and it's, it's what those other agencies are willing to help you with as well. And then we try to reach out anytime we get an opportunity. We try to reach out and enlist and help if we can. But just like I, you know, if I'm not mistaken, that one with the US Secret Service, and I actually have unknown. I don't know whatever happened with that case. It was one of them two years ago where we called them and said, hey, we got this, three hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars. This is something you can help us with. Um, most likely they said, yes, we sent them the copy of the file. And then who follows up with that? The officer who took the report or me who, to be honest, I get busy and forget to go back and look through the portion two years ago. I don't know if they ever did anything with this case or not. Um, you know, they, they don't even have, really have a contact person to reach back out to the department and say. Hey, we've, we've identified a suspect in this case. It's still up to the jurisdictional agency to follow his charges. So if they call us back and said, hey, we've identified, um, that Mr. Park is here at Bezzel for three hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars.
He wanted to post a bail.
I know. Then it would still be on our responsibility to take his information, go to our local district attorney's office and prosecute. The, the case is still a local case. We're just soliciting outside help. So, you know, the, the case doesn't just go away. We, we do ask for help. There's, there's no definitive, well, if it's nine hundred and ninety-nine thousand, they won't help us. And when it hits a hundred thousand, they will. You know, it's, best answer is there's no definitive hard line answer there.
Sometimes they just take over like, well, we had the murder, right? And they just take over here out of it?
Not Old Beach charged that murder. Old Beach charged that murder. Old Beach investigated that murder. We were in every step of that. The Sheriff's Office Assistant Old Beach, the North Carolina State Bureau of Investigations.
That's when you were detective. We still had detectives?
Yes. Yes. We had several agencies that assisted Old Beach. I can go pull the court records for you. Old Beach Police Department was the charging agency on that murder. We were lead investigators on that murder. They assisted us. Things that happened inside this jurisdiction are the responsibility of the Old Beach Police Department.
To, to your question about that happened when we had a detective. It was when Jeremy, that happened after Wally had retired and Jeremy had just been promoted to the chief's job. Weren't you the chief's?
Not quite. It was, it was in the transition period. He was, he was all getting ready to retire.
Okay. I stand corrected. I stand corrected.
If I remember right.
Sir.
If I remember right, he was not here on site.
He was, I think he was burning out his last few, like he had like a vacation.
Ja- Jeremy solved that.
Yeah, no, I just.
That's what I'm trying to get at.
Is there any more questions, comments, concerns on that one? Right, okay. So the next one down, uh, fifth priority was, I was looking at, uh, legal services for us. I've heard in a lot of these meetings about professional services and legal services, and to be honest, it got my wheels spinning. We have nothing like that. We have no legal review. We have nothing like that. And there are companies out there who, who legal services. And high risk and high liability policy review for law enforcement agencies. We've, we've had no review of that. Don't know what it would look like. Again, I'm just throwing this out there. You know, I know that it could potentially mitigate some liability to the town. I know that it could lead to future accreditation for us if that's something we even decide to pursue. I would tell you, I have a lot of reservations about pursuing accreditation, but I'm not saying it's a terribly bad thing to do. So I think there's a lot to weigh there. Um, that's why it's so far down the list. It's definitely not a top priority, but it's something I wanted to throw out there. And I'll just mention that something that I have looked at and considered is that we really probably should consider some type of legal review, at least on our high risk. And high liability policies.
So what kind of accreditation is involved?
There, there are, there are several, excuse me, law enforcement accreditations available out there through the state. The, the biggest one is on the national level is Collegiate. Again, I'm not advocating for these or saying that this is even something that we should do. From what I understand, accreditation gives you certain advantages when it comes to, uh, say you apply for grants later on. There, because you're accredited, all your stuff is necessarily in a certain order that they expect to see. So they kind of say, hey, we've already got you through steps one, two, or three. There's no guarantee that you still get anything on the backend, but it kind of puts you at the forefront through those first steps. The state accreditation kind of does the same thing. And again, I, I'm still in the very infant, uh, infant stages of learning about this accreditation. Whether it would be advantageous to the police department or not. So.
Let me see if I understand this. So basically, um. We would have an attorney or something look at our current, um, liability policies, high risk policies and see if we were adequately protected.
Yes.
So, so someone doesn't sue the town for ten million dollars because of something law enforcement did.
Correct. Correct. So, so take out the, and, and yeah, take out the future accreditation thing.
Right.
Just, just, just at today, what I'm looking at is really the high risk, high liability. Our pursuit policy says A, B, C, and D. And it's very much dependent on time of year. Like we, we have a lot of stipulations in our pursuit policy. If it's summertime, the shoulders are jammed back. Our officers are running ninety mile an hour up and down the beach pursuing someone. So, but this never had any type of legal review, honestly. So there, the company that I'm looking at, Lexipol, they do this. They take all of your policies, your high risk, your high liability policies. They review them compared to national, you know, standards. And anytime a law changes, you know, they say, hey, your, your policy looks good. Or your policy, we think has some gaps. So we think you should fill those gaps with this, this, this. And again, it's, it's up to the agency to follow those guidelines or not. You know, it depends on, you know. Cause the guidelines for Wilmington Police Department, for instance, are going to be very different than they are for us just because of our surroundings itself. So just because they say Wilmington Police Department is doing this, doesn't necessarily mean it's going to be a good practice for the Old Beach Police Department. So we can still not do it based on our surroundings or our, you know, circumstances. So, but they, they look at that. And then anytime a new law comes out, um, like the, uh, the George Floyd Justice Reform Act, when they came out. You know, we basically, Frank and I went through that and tried to compare this reform act, which was huge to what we had. I felt like we did a good job. But this company, they literally, when, when any new law or any new act or anything like that comes out. They go through because they're doing it for every agency. They may do it a sheet. And then they send it to you and then you get the bullet points of this is, this is where we need to go ahead. And so we're not spending weeks trying to go through this thing ourselves, trying to figure it out. It's already there in bullet points. Then we can go through and prepare it for our actual policy and figure out if it's applicable or if it's not applicable or. So it's really, it's a risk review. Um, there are different stages. You can go from the high risk, high liability. All the way down to your, uh, you know, policy on how you tie your shoes. They'll cover that if you want to, but. You know, I don't know if you necessarily, if there's low risk, uh, liability.
Have we ever done one of these?
We have not, not, not that I've ever been aware of since I grew up. And then the last priority that I threw out there was a mobile police department app. Compared to some of the other ones, much cheaper, uh, but as far as a priority, but I, I think it's a good tool. It's, it's a mobile police department app. Um, I've actually downloaded it on my phone. There is, it's called, uh, North Carolina's NC Police App. And, uh, you, anybody can download it. And every agency in the state of North Carolina is on there. Um, it's just whether that agency has been activated. And so you can activate if your agency's activated. But anyway, you get alerts, um, if the police department pushes anything out, like, hey, we've got job openings. You know, we've got, uh, traffic delays, whatever the police department pushes out for emergency services, anything like that. It's just good communication for the public.
The public downloads the app and you guys push the notice.
Correct.
It'll take work on your end.
It, it, after the initial setup, then, then the notifications are pre.
No, but you, you would create the notifications and send them out.
Correct. Okay, correct.
That's new, right?
Yes, no, we do, we do not have this technology now, but it would definitely be a new, and this is why it's one of the lower priorities. You know, just trying to figure out how we can communicate better with the public.
Is this a tool that perhaps the mayor would use if we have to put down evacuation notices or anything like that?
I would, I would definitely hope to, to work with the mayor and town manager. Any of those notifications that you put out.
I still have the HP app on my phone. I haven't gotten a notification in several years now, but it's still on my phone.
Yeah, if that one's not live anymore.
I kind of figured that would be changed. But I mean, you know, unless you're feeding it.
Right. You have to go in there.
You know, so if you guys don't feed it.
Correct.
It'll sit like the other.
I call it the fire is an example, the structure fire.
Yep.
That will be an example when this, because everybody comes to see, okay, what's, what exactly is on fire? Everybody drives down there. If, if you were able to push out and say, unfortunately, the car wash is on fire. Please stay clear of the area. Now, not everybody's going to stay clear of it, but.
But whoever's responding to the fires, we have to take their time to create that message to send it.
No, I'm saying as soon as, you know, there's not much we can do other than traffic control until they put the fire out. So we would have time.
Okay.
Certainly we will drop that broken.
And that's, that's kind of the list on that as far as priorities. And a rough estimate, if, if everything were to go, you're looking about three hundred and thirty grands. And then just to, to throw out there so that everybody knows what we'd be expecting in the future. Next year, we're going to have to do a holistic vest replacement program. The last time, there was just somewhere about eight hundred to a thousand dollars a piece for vests. So we're going to be looking, um, you know, anywhere from eight thousand, ten thousand dollars for vests. Again, I, well, I'm still here and some change offered me buying those. So if I gave you a number now, I promise you it would be valid next year. And then of course we'd be looking to replace two more trucks next year. So if we kick two of these trucks down the road this year. Next year, I'm probably going to have four trucks on the list. So just, just throwing that out there. Uh, I'm sure other stuff will come up for next year, but to just, just throw it out there that we kind of see us where we're at with it.
Do you replace all the vests at the same time or they stagger?
We did, so we did all the vests at the same time last year. Uh, and I, not last year, last cycle in twenty twenty is when it was. They're on a five year lifespan. We, we replaced everyone's vest. And then the next few pages here, like I said, kind of twenty-two and twenty-three incident reports. This is not every single report. This is the ones that I kind of. I was like, yeah, this, this, these are the ones really that I felt like should have been focused on by the investigator and really should have put the time and effort into these cases that did not see it.
The dollar, monetary value is how much?
And, yeah, and well, as you can see, some of that, so the, the third number now, if you look, is, is really kind of stolen damage unsolved. Like I think one of those was like two some million dollars, if I remember right. Going there, uh, going there a lightning strike. That was, that was half a million dollars on a lightning. That was half a million dollars on a lightning strike. So I might count that as a total loss, you know, it was. But we're fortunate this time it was a lightning strike. I think what went on was electric. Again, I'm very glad that we're in a situation, in a community where we're not having a bunch of violent crimes. You're not, you know, just some all here, you're not in, but you're not seeing a bunch of rapes and sexual assaults. It's not every weekend thing. I'm very fortunate that we live in that type of community, and officers do a great job of preventing that as much as they can. I'd forbid those cases start rolling in, because there's no one that has the time, the specialty, expertise, training to go investigate those cases properly. And then the last two pages there are just kind of an overview. All of those things were in our budgets, of what it would look like. Again, those are very round numbers. That's kind of her, I think we put some of the radios there in 1,600 maintenance equipment. I don't think there's any big changes there on anything other than what we talked about in these first six sections. Ah, inoculations, line 6,000.
Oh, yeah, I had that highlighted.
Yes. So I didn't even put this in the thing, but on the right, I just noticed it. So inoculation obviously is shots, immunizations, et cetera, et cetera. What we typically use that line for is drug screening, things like that, psychological screening, all that good stuff. Because we don't really have a separate place in there for that. Anytime we do a background investigation on an officer, if they hire them, we send them psychological evaluations, just send them the drug screening, all that good stuff. They're involved in any type of incident at work, they're going to have to go for drug screening, depending on the incident, we may even send them back for psychological screening. But anyway, those, that $2,500 has been like that for as long as I can remember forever. So apparently, pricing is not the same, and I've already, we're up to about $850 a visit is what paying to send anybody for drug screening and psychological evaluations now, which we've been through in our background investigations. And I'm already out of that money this year. I still have one vacancy to fill. So if Dango came to apply with us today, and I wanted to be given the job, I don't even have the money to send him for, I would have to pull that money from some other line, but I don't even have money to send him for a drug screening or a psychological evaluation. So I would like to lump down to $4,000, just to, so they all remember you this next year.
So what is FMRT?
FMRT, if you're, you're making a lot to you about that acronym. They are the company that we use for our psychological, our drug screening, medical, we all know, screening process.
I have a question on the last line. What is Lexi-Pole?
Lexi-Pole is that risk evaluation, risk evaluation company. It's the one we were looking at, Lexi-Pole.
Yeah, I got you. Sorry.
Yes. All right, that's a rough estimate of where we're at. And again, that's kind of where I've run away from this. And just throwing it out there, so we'll see where it goes from there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Yoo, you're going to talk about Canal Fund.
We ready to go there? Yes, sir. The Canal dredging revenue funds are next. There's three of them. Holton Beach Harbor, Hardeach Harbor, and Harbor Acres. What we've done there, we've gone ahead and prepared an exploratory budget by making the assessments as if they were already made and parsing out the expenditure budgets on that. You know, this is, this, this fund pretty much is a shovel-ready standard project that with some attention on it, does pretty well, because it's set up well. I mean, beyond, beyond that, I don't know what to bring towards you. These numbers represent what we're forecasting in terms of the same assessments that we made last year for next year, but we have not met with the Canal Working Group yet. But normally, that takes place after Easter, when folks come down and do what they do. But that's where we all, if there is no issue with the proposal or the assessment, this is what those budgets should look like.
So you're basically based that on what we charged last year? And just to make sure you're comfortable based on, as comfortable as we can get with dredging, that this canal fund is in pretty good shape. That's my recollection on it. If we have an emergency dredge or something, you've got these reserves in there, right?
Absolutely.
So are people still paying into this every year?
Yes.
Because you do have.
It's shovel-ready.
We do have pretty good balances in each of these funds, so. Yeah, okay.
And that's on a, now, and I know that, you know, we're not to capital projects per se yet, but I mean, I'll go ahead and segue into that. We're actually not planning on doing a full, robust, a full-up dredge project until, I believe it was '27. Is that correct, Christie?
Um, we're going to be working at '26, '27.
Okay, '26, '27. But in the capital plan, we just show it in the upcoming year, because it's shovel-ready, and if something untowardly happens in the fall hurricane season, you know, it's a reactive purchasing and contract, meaning we're getting the dredges lined up to do the work instead of the money or the permits. So we'll just continue to reflect it in the current year's budget, but the plan has it in '26, in a couple of years.
Will it just always show up in the, for the current year, next year, or will it still show up again?
Uh, I mean, in the past, we actually jumped it out, the seven years, but we're just going to show it in the immediacy in the current year. Unless you'd like to see it otherwise. That's the Canal Dredge.
Any other questions?
Y'all good back there?
More questions or comments for Mr. Yoo? If not, are you ready to adjourn?
I think we want to talk about the capital plan a little bit.
Yeah. First, about the beach inlet, one that you had in there. You had a page in there to talk about.
The one with the scary number?
Oh, that's not that scary. Um. Ha. Got it. Bear with me, I'm sorry.
It's page 17. Yeah, I got it.
So what we, what we did is we talked to Fran Wade, our co-host of consulting in Chin, and Christie, please chime in if I say anything right, about what we're trying to put forward. And I think that what we're trying to put forward is a number of things that affect each other. So where we got to was that our most likely beach nourishment project is going to be a FEMA project. That's, that's what we believe. Unless, I'm sorry.
I said, okay, go ahead.
Unless there are changes to that program. And those are probably likely repetitive losses, the way that we've seen some permutations go. I spoke last Friday, it was a week ago, I believe, I spoke to how previously the governor's declaration or request to the president was predicated on Holton Beach's losses. And that's what got North Carolina a declaration. Now, the way, as I understand it, that process is changing, and beach damages are not going to go into the factors making a FEMA declaration. It's going to not be category G beach damages, which are recreational facilities, and that's what we have. So what we went with was, it's probably going to be most likely, from what we can see now, a FEMA event. That's what we got to pin our heads on. We developed a hypothetical town-sponsored project to develop a planning horizon for 15 years. And based on the input from Fran, an estimate that we got using our numbers, and most recently, a project up at Rops Beach, which was pretty close, we have semi-widely estimated that a $51 million project would be what it would take to front a town project. And that's probably maybe likely scenario, but in order to get to how you're going to get the $15, $51 million, we looked at applying the Coors methodology in some kind. So if it's a FEMA project, everything's going to get paid for. Because if it's a core project, of course, that's a different, a different number of years. But we're applying that methodology to the 15-year planning horizon. So we went with, what's it going to take to get a third of the $51 million? So that's where our numbers came through there. And that's the word I add. It's 65, 35, and I just use a third, a two-thirds euphemistically. So that's where we, that's where we went to with the scoping, the total project need, and some of the mechanisms that we went through in there, or to, of course, look at the need for $51 million a year, that's $3.4 million. Y'all can, y'all can do the math there, and it pro-rates what the town needs to get to. So in order to provide those revenues, we just, we just started going right down and looking at everything. We took the liberty of including the general fund balance that will be before you on the agenda tomorrow night, the $610,000, to move that over to the capital fund, in addition to the existing balance in the CRF fund, lest the netted out transfer back to B Park in this, in, what was that, 346? I forget.
It's the crossing project.
That's the crossing project.
So it's only in there every other year, because that's direct sand on the beach.
That's right. That's what we remember that. So we netted that out, and we attempted to provide.
Sorry, I'm just catching up.
Oh, that's fine. That's fine. So what we, what we then did, we attempted to include the fact that we're going to get the principal back from Brunswick County on the escrow payment that they have, Holton Forest, the $1.2 million. And that's in the central reach refund tied along in the $27, $28, at $1.2 million. That'll be the money that comes back to the town. And then the line above that, in lieu of debt service. We used that term to identify or characterize the monies that we would have been paying on the special obligation bond, and said, well, if we're not spending that money on debt service, logic, logic holds true, I mean, if the board's okay with it, that it would, that that would be a direct, or could be a direct contribution.
That's our payment of the central reach.
That's the principal.
Did it pay off at that point, so that money?
Yeah, it actually pays off the year before, and then we get the central reach refund of the $1, $2. So that's the, that's the bread, prime trail on the $1.2 million across in lieu of debt service.
So adding all this up?
Gets, gets the.
13 years from now, we get $13 million. Hopefully more, right? Because this general fund balance will hopefully occur every year.
Well, well, no.
That's also not assuming any interest earned on that money. We've got to earn interest.
And additionally, what's not showing through is that we have the interest earned on the money that is escrowed with Brunswick County that's refunded to us on an annual basis, in addition to the decremented amount in value from year to year. So those two values stepping down, it's probably going to be in the neighborhood of $40,000 to $50,000. But still, those aren't in there. I've just thought about it.
So can I just make sure I understand what you're saying? So right now, we have $1.375 in the balance?
Yeah, I'm saying you got $1 million because you're going to transfer next year's out to pay for the sand on the beach on the east end. But yeah, $1.375.
Because that's the transfer to B Park, the $345,700. And we're going to put in, you're counting the $610 towards next year's?
No, this is going to be done tomorrow night, if y'all approve it.
Right, okay. So you don't have us putting in anything really at all until the, until the loan for the central reach is over, and then you start putting that in? Nothing is in the budget to save this year?
I'm not, I'm.
Or next year, or the year after?
I'm coming, thank you. For the trips?
Yeah.
It's in six, yeah, $989. That'll be actually quite pretty, quite four, right, if it goes through tomorrow? And then it's dependent on our ability to, the fund out policy, that we have the right reserves and we've got the fund balance numbers that we're allowed. And hopefully, I mean, the way it reads right now is.
I don't think we're going to have above 70% much to move over to the central reach.
Right.
I just don't think we're going to have that.
Unfortunately, I agree.
But I don't know, until we put all of this together and.
So what I'm seeing is that we're not putting any money into the beach fund for five years until central reach, we stop paying for central reach? 24, 25, 26, 27, and then 28, we put in one. Go ahead, Christie. Am I missing something?
Yes, ma'am.
I was just going to say, well, I think to capture what they both said, we would be putting something in if there was an excess over 70% in fund balance, but that number is not known, so that's not shown, because we won't know if there is any, or if we would follow the policy if there is excess. So there's not a number to put in there, because we don't know what that might be. And then the only other thing I would add, and David just might not be there yet, but also since the, we've done this project, and since that fund was set up, there's a state fund now, the Coastal Damage Mitigation Fund. They've helped some of our neighboring beaches. I'm not sure what their grant funding level will be in 15 years, but you would also have the potential of a state source to tap into, to ask for grant assistance towards the project.
That would only be if we had a project.
Right.
We can't ask them to add work.
No, they don't know.
And, you know, the not putting any money over there from the general fund is. And, and, you know, the not putting any money over there from the general fund is, you know, that position is, in my mind, is predicated on having an available, unassigned available fund balance above 70%. Right now, your fund balance is spitballed at between 40 and 70. If you wanted to check, and although the local government commission recommended off the cuff, which the town adopted that policy, that it'd be between 40 and 70%, there's nothing to say that the board can't modify the policy. So you can go down, you can go down to 40%, should you decide to do that.
You wouldn't recommend that, would you?
Well, once we put it in...
Once we wrap it all together, we'll see.
Okay, all right, fair enough.
And that, you know, when these things come together, that may be, in fact, something that the board wishes to discuss, is changing that fund balance policy. I don't know if I wanna recommend it or not, because we're still in a kind of a very gray and foggy planning horisment, but, you know, reflecting back on, you know, since the beach in the Capitol pool reserve fund was established, there's been a bunch of things that's happened. Four major hurricanes that was bundled into the largest project that the town ever had. The Coors changed their policy and practice on how they put the sand from the inlet crossing on the end of the beach, from annually to a two-year cycle. The Mervin Hopper dredge is now a staunch component, or a reliable component of the Coors dredge fleet, and it's used on an intermittent basis, dig sand and hoppers it to the, to the swirl out here in front of Block A Run. There's a private dredge now with the Miss Cady that provides another mechanism. You know, we've got an SDI-5 permit that we had when that fund was established, but we hadn't exercised it. We didn't know if it worked or not. We know now that it works, because we dug right through the middle of the Civil War historic district, and the Coors said they could not do it, and got it done. The state's got that storm damage mitigation fund that Christie talked about, as well as an uptick in the revenues that are going into the shallow draft inlet funds that are now available. Both of those are state funding mechanisms that were not in existence when we, when the town established that beach in the Capitol Reserve Fund. And then finally, you know, we're working on the Coors project, that PPA agreement, which I believe now that we have all the pieces on it coming together, is fully funded. There may be some that's, a residual that's left, but for the most part, that's, that's all funded. So all these, all those things taking place, you may wish to discuss, or you may wish to reevaluate that fund balance policy, how much it should be, what's available to you.
My understanding, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but, you know, it was set up right after central reach, funded like a million a year for 10 years, so that we could do another central reach. That was before we realized we were gonna be able to get FEMA. But it was four or five million a couple of years ago, so it has been significantly drawn down over the past several years. That's gone to the inlet dredging, has it gone to the Scour study, or, you know, I'm not sure exactly where that money went, but it was, I know it was close to four or five million a couple of years back.
Any, any withdrawals from that would have been done in accordance with the policy that was established in the resolution that adopted it.
So that would include inlet dredging?
Well, you want to define inlet dredging.
Well, I just try to figure out where that money went, because it went down.
Because there's a couple of types of inlet dredging, and that's part and parcel of the definition, and why it may be good to look at it as just to be used for those operations that put sand in the system, not so much just for the lawn mower that sprays it out to the side.
Christie, you wanna answer?
I do. I was just gonna make a clarification point to what Mayor Proton Meyer said. And I believe it was 2018 this fund was established, if I'm not off on the year, I don't have it in front of me, but the a million a year for 10 years was not a policy of the town.
I understand. This is all...
It was not adopted by the town. It was the, that was an outside...
Never black and white.
Well, I hear you. I agree with you.
Yeah, it's the 40 to 70% is only policy that the town has, so I just wanna make sure we get that out loud, that that part was not, not town policy. And then any expenditures could have been for, I mean, we'd have to go back and look for the exact amounts, but it could have been for inlet dredging or sand on the beach, but more recently, the board adopted that it was only when there was sand on the beach. So as far as placement.
Okay. And bottom line is, we need a bucket of money for a sand nourishment project in the future, hopefully.
And we don't have a lot.
Yeah, and if this isn't the mechanism to set aside that money, then we need a mechanism. I guess I view these things as like a 401K, where we figure we're gonna need the money at some point in the future, and we hope we have it when we need it, and I don't know if this is working that way. It's going down, it's not going up.
Well, you got two million yards of sand out on the beach that you didn't have.
Right. And we wouldn't have had if we hadn't done central reach.
So I think you've done a good job in putting something together to, so we can start looking at how big this monster is. And David, if I understand what you're saying, it sounds like we need to do some work to look at all these funding sources and see if we can kinda capture and how it might work in the event that we need to do a project. We don't have all the answers yet. Am I getting that right, David? There are a lot of moving parts, you know, the repetitive losses, is that gonna become reality? We don't know. The state funding is good news. I think I've heard that they've had, and I can't remember, their request for funding might have exceeded their income for the first time to have this in front of them. So all this stuff is very dynamic, but at least the initial approach here, I think, is reasonable, just to see what we're dealing with.
Yeah, I agree.
I like it.
It's a good pass, I agree. The shortfall that I'm seeing here is that, so you're saying that we should have 1.7 million, which is okay, but we're only gonna have...
What did you say, 1.7 million?
Or, excuse me, 17, 17 million of our share, and we're only gonna have 13. And so I think what you said in your, whatever page before, is we're gonna be, have a $4 million shortfall, so we should be putting 1.5 in for the next four years, if we wanna...
Well, we left the delta there, between the 17 and the 13, just to illustrate that there are other sources of funding for that. I think that it will be totally, I'd be totally remiss if we hadn't brought the other two-state funding mechanisms in there, but we haven't included them in the totals here, just for the reason that Christie said, we don't know if they'll be there. But that CSBN, the Coastal Storm Damage Mitigation Fund, is a relatively new fund. The shallow draft inlet stood up first, and they got the mechanism working out, so that the gas tax and the voter registrations would pay for it. And then surprisingly, a couple of years ago, I believe it was, they actually pulled some of that money out to establish the Coastal Storm Damage Mitigation Fund. And then subsequently, I do not believe that it has a dedicated revenue stream like the voter registration and gas tax does for the shallow draft inlet fund, but it's my understanding that's been funded with direct state appropriations to the fund.
Christie?
I would just add that's correct, that it doesn't have a dedicated funding source. They've been searching for that, like the shallow draft inlet fund does, and therefore, it would probably be remiss to try to put that on a document, because each year, they don't know how much they'll have available and how many people are gonna apply, and so we wouldn't know. There's no way to take a number and say 75% of that is what we could get, because we don't know what they're gonna have allocated for the year at that time.
I mean, but I think what I'm getting to is that the easy thing would be to plus $3 million, and say it's gonna be from the shallow, from the CSBN fund.
Looking for a map that I have, Steve.
Well, it may be like taking Google's directions to the pier, man from Charlotte.
Well, you gotta start somewhere, see where you are and where you wanna be.
What's next, talking about?
PG 18.
I knew it's not here. It's probably late.
Regular season.
Huh?
Regular season.
Okay, I think that this will make more sense if I started talking to page 19 first, because that's expensive. And we're starting the general fund, and probably the, when we met last and Chris spoke about his needs, and as part of the draft budget preparation, the, we spoke about updating the streets assessment survey study, and what we have in this budget is, since we have, in the current budget, we have the numbers for 24 through 27, with 105,000 for Haron, Lewis and Lundy, Swordfish in Charlotte at 102, and Burlington, Hair, Land and Wine at 127. So I didn't wanna just regurgitate the old study, you know, go to the bottom of where we started at, and using a program, in fact, $200,000 a year for the streets to be determined, that what the streets condition survey will tell us. Without having that streets condition survey, I really don't have anything to go on, other than just a semi-wide guess that it's gonna be a couple hundred thousand dollars. When we get that condition survey, those numbers, of course, will be updated and fleshed out better. But that's, that's what we were relegated to in terms of planning for that. Stormwater programs, that, that $2 million rider, that's the same $2 million that I've been throwing around, and the funding for that would be the 5113 federal money, in addition to the town's portion of that.
So that was 1.5 on your thing that we did earlier when you were looking at. How did that go up to $2 million?
Well, the most recent meeting that we had with the stormwater engineer and the Corps was about 1.8, and so I used administrative privilege there, and went ahead and bumped it to 2 million. On the police vehicles, those are, those are off, after seeing Jeremy's budget, those are, those are off one year. And the 170 in the upcoming, for the upcoming years, right? But then we're gonna have to compress the 25, 27 numbers there. And then over on streets and sanitation, that just reflects Chris's bright, wide slope for streets and sanitation replacement truck.
Just out of curiosity, we don't escalate the cost of the vehicles over the years?
We should, we didn't on that one.
Okay. I'd love to be able to get the truck from 55, and have that 34. Of course, I want the drop.
Yeah, for, for, at this point in time, in this exercise, we just want to get cell, the cells populated, hard looking.
I mean, earlier, it had 38.
Yeah.
A couple of weeks ago, it only had 38, so we did update it.
Well, Mr. Suter? We're using the four-point, we're using the bid that came in on that, I mean, that's the bid that we got in that the project was an exercise on, I believe that's what you were...
I thought we were at 4.7 for the, you're talking about T.A. Love, you spent on the last, for Station 2, am I misspeaking? I was figuring you escalated it. Sorry.
Mayor Holden cannot come in?
Yes, ma'am.
So the state asked us to take contingency into that fact, and the engineer has told us that they thought that that number was gonna continue to go up over time versus when they bid it the last time. So we took the number that we supplied to the state based on that calculation. So that's why that number's so precise.
And then a truck in the water and sewer department. Chris, are these $20,000 annual estimates on the fire hydrant replacement, are those still in keeping what you desire?
I thought we revisited that right there, we might just, that just...
Those capital items are those operations that made the work fairing, right? Without any...
It's just replacing, it was just to replace existing hydrants. At the time, somebody was sleeping it, and the Georgia Fire Hydrants, there's things going on, but I'm thinking, I'm gonna revisit that right there, maybe just buy a few illegal bits of them, and I'll put them in until the hydrant goes out. Fire Department does do the job, and they test those things twice a year, and they did repairs, and they let us know, just that I'm all about getting my service and get out in months of fear. And plus, too, when we had our short calls, it parts and pieces, but we didn't get nothing from the...
I, yeah, I'm just wondering if they're really a capital item, or they're just being operating budget to replace somebody a year.
That's what it counts, you know, when you can...
Well, the, the, the capital plan is the, is the chief executive's privilege on what goes in there. Not an accounting function.
Technically, sand is a capital.
No, I, I... Well, it just seems like a recurring...
It's a, it's a big number. It's a big number, so we put it in there. And then, you know, Chris's lift station generator replacement program, are we replacing the generator every year, Chris?
Well, without full compensation, we've got a generator that's...
And in the fifth year, we're gonna go.
The way it's been working out, even though I got one over here a year, it's been taken over a year to get one, when I ordered one, so it's just about been going two years. Matter of fact, one of their has its own, it's a bit like the offer, but the replacement... Matter of fact, one of their has its own, it's like the offer, but the replacement is a few days out according to my supplier.
And I did not, I did not skip 796 on OPW on purpose, I just don't know what to do with it.
No problem. No problem.
Next is the B part fund. And you know what? I'm not even gonna try to go into the details on this because Christie knows them backwards and forward, and it'll just be an embarrassment if me to have her to come behind me and correct everything that I say on this. So if I could defer to her on the B part fund, if she would allow me to do that, that's what I'd like to do.
So your top line there is, that's a catch-all. We discussed this in a previous workshop where we talked about an old capital plan that we're currently operating with, but as a review, that top line is a catch-all. And basically, it represents anything that has been identified for upcoming or it can, it most definitely is correlated to the 2021 master plan for the capital plan that they put in the back. So those numbers correspond there.
Wait, why is it so big, 26, 27?
Well, 27, 28, it's two.
Well, yeah.
It would be the list of improvements that they listed in that plan. I didn't bring that plan down with me today, but if you reference your plan for projects in the back by year, it shows what those, each one of those projects were. So there was just more projects that occurred in that year that they recommended. And then the, okay, so in your actual budget that I presented to you guys as department input Friday was a week ago, the access and recreation line was if you add walkways and access and recreation together, because walkways we pulled out in the capital plan to recognize them separately, but in your regular budget, it's included in that line that says access and recreation. So that's why those two numbers look different. If you just compare the access and rate line in the budget that you got the other night versus this one. If you go up above it and add walkways in, you'll get to the number. Do you guys understand that?
Yeah.
Okay. And then your Block Q would be the tagline out to the side, whereas it says trailer phase one, restroom is phase two. That tagline should, was a leftover from last year, so that actually shouldn't be there as part of the title. But the 760 is from your budget sheets you got the other day. And it represents your restroom and the stormwater portion that goes with the restroom. So I think everything else is pretty self-explanatory, but that's a walkthrough of what those items represent.
The 760 for restroom for Block Q, are that covered by the grant or...
Yes, if you turn to the revenue side, you'll see the grant coming in on that side or not the, what, the remaining part after the town's portion.
Five hundred and something, is that right?
Yes.
Where is that?
The grant's 420,000. That's, that's the count.
We have a grant, so that's with that, that Block Q. So we're paying 760 for the whole project, you get the 420 back?
No, 200,000 of that is stormwater that y'all wrapping into the grant. But you gotta have the stormwater on the site, the grant's not paying for the stormwater. So if you want to do the project, you got to pay the 200 in stormwater that we didn't do that was a 300 cost this year. And so then you got to ask what that amount would be just to do the bathroom part, and the answer from the engineer was around 200,000. So don't mix that 200,000 in this 760 with the grant in your mind or you're gonna get mixed up.
Okay, 'cause I am.
Yeah, 200 in the stormwater, then it's just for those parcels that have the restroom on them?
Restroom and parking, that's required for the restroom.
Right, those eight spots or whatever was under two handicap?
Not for the rest of the site.
So really, it is the full cost of the bathrooms because we had to do that in order to do the bathrooms.
We're gonna get another opinion on that. We've heard two different things. We're gonna, we're gonna, before we answer that affirmatively, I want to, I want to detail that better.
Or there's a vacuum, if you, I believe. So there's, I have a question, I guess on the Lockwood soli, the 383, 096 maps to the chart we were just talking about in 21, but we didn't have the 83 map chart, but...
That's not putting sand on the beach. That's when we just do a clean out of inlet with the Merit.
Side of the gasket.
So it doesn't come out of that time, it comes out of the gallon plant at that point?
No, it comes out of B part operating, right?
Yeah, that's one of those, for the... You did? Did you have any computer?
No, sorry.
Are we done with some more?
Huh?
That's pretty much it.
Yeah. I don't have anything here for that.
Period, I'm saying motion to adjourn unless someone makes a point. Motion to adjourn.